...
An accurate record of the meeting. We ask, of course, that everyone observe the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of the meetings this evening, which should be reflective of our great community. The mayor is the presiding officer of the meeting and will ensure the orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion, leading to decision-making by the elected body. Would also encourage you and the viewing audience to visit the city website for meetings, events, and departmental information. We also encourage you to review and participate in the various activities and offerings of the city. There are a number of events scheduled coming up in the city, which the mayor will speak about in just a moment, which promote community, physical activity, and leisure, as we all make Roswell the number-one family community in America. Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Knighton. At this time, I'd like to call Deacon Walter Larry from the Zion Missionary Baptist Church to the front for the invocation and moment of silence. Welcome, Deacon Larry.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. And to the council and to our citizens, let's turn our attention to the Lord. Father in heaven, we come tonight thanking you, oh God, first of all, recognizing and giving you praise, glory, and honor for this day, Father, for blessing us to live in the light of this day, Father. Father, we come this evening thanking you for the blessings bestowed upon this great city of Roswell. Father, we thank you for this diverse group of families and communities, Father, that make up this great city. Father, we come asking that you would just continue to bless and guide our leaders. Father, bless them with discerning spirits, Father, that they will make decisions that will be best for all of the citizens of Roswell, Father. We pray that you would just continue to bless and keep them, Father. Lord, we pray for your blessings upon our citizens, that they may continue to grow and flourish, Father, and enjoy and experience the greatness of our nation. Father, we ask your blessing upon our teachers, all of our principals, Father, our staff within our school, Father, praying that you would continue to bless them and keep our students safe. We also ask your blessing upon our police, our fire, Father, and all of our emergency individuals, Father, who serve this great city, Father, praying that you would just bless and keep them and also keep them safe, Lord. And, Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to call upon your name and recognize you as our Savior and Lord. So we thank you, oh God, for this time and this period, and we pray that you would bless this meeting, Father, that it will be fruitful and be a blessing to all of the citizens here of Roswell. And, Father, we just would like to ask for your blessing upon this council and their families, and asking the blessing from number 624 through 26, Father, which states, "The Lord bless you and keep you; the Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious to you; the Lord lift up his continence unto you and to give you peace." We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And, Mayor, if I may, I would like to just offer an invitation to you and to the council and to your family to join us for our anniversary. Roswell Zion Missionary Baptist Church will be celebrating 152 years of being a church here in the Roswell community. That will happen on February 26, during our 10:30 service, and we'll leave information with your assistance. So we welcome you to join us on that time.
Deacon Larry, thank you. Thank you for that invitation, and I know that probably I'll be there. I can't speak for the rest of these rascals, who knows? But I look forward to enjoying the 152nd anniversary of the Zion Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you so much, Deacon Larry, for your prayer for being with us. Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, thank you again so much, Deacon Larry, from the Zion Missionary Baptist Church. At this time, I'd like to call U.S. Army Security Agency E-5 Specialist Robert Anderson to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Specialist E-5 Robert Anderson, esteemed veteran. Whereas Robert Anderson was born and raised in Minneapolis, Minnesota, he attended high school in Minneapolis and graduated from the University of Minnesota and majored in history and political science. Bob enlisted the United States Army on July 31, 1967, and reported to Army Basic Training at Fort Lenoirwood, Missouri. He was selected for advanced training in what was then called the Army Security Agency and sent to Fort Devens, Massachusetts. Bob was highly trained as a Morse code-qualified operator to intercept and listen in on communications and to operate direction-finding equipment to geographically locate the source of the signals. Due to this highly specialized division and security position, Bob received top security clearance. And whereas after his advanced training in 1967, Bob was sent to serve in Asmara, Ethiopia, known today as Etria, Bob worked in a highly classified area and on top secret assignments. Bob's base often had visits from the Ethiopian Emperor Haile Selassie. The emperor would come to the city of Asmara on an annual basis, and he would tour the base and meet the troops. Emperor Selassie was a United States ally, and we were part of coming to his defense as a nation when he was attacked by Mussolini. He appealed to the League of Nations, but received only minimal assistance and was actually in exile until he could return with a brigade of British soldiers where they retook the country. And whereas in 1970, Bob was transferred to the Army Security Agency Field Station on Shemea, Alaska, in the Aleutian Islands, about 1,200 miles southwest of Anchorage, Alaska. He continued to work on highly classified assignments and was promoted to Specialist Fifth Class on May 5, 1970. Due to the highly classified nature of his work, Bob, to this day, is not at liberty to discuss the actual work he performed. To quote his commanding officer, "When you go back home, never discuss what you did, and you will never get into trouble," unquote. Whereas Bob has served as an Eagle Scout mentor and on the Eagle Scout Board of Review to approve and welcome a new generation of Eagle Scouts, Bob has been a member of the American Legion for 23 years and is a member of American Legion Post 201. While living in Iowa, Bob was presented with the United States flag that had flown over Camp Ehrifan, Iraq during Operation Iraqi Freedom and Iraqi Enduring Freedom for his support and contribution of sending packages to the troops. The flag is on display at an American Legion post in Iowa. And whereas Specialist Fifth Class Robert Anderson received his honorable discharge in March 1973, and the United States Army awarded and bestowed the following medals: National Defense Service Medal, Good Conduct Medal, and qualification bars for the M-14 and M-16 rifles. And whereas Bob has been married to Susan Lee and recently celebrated their 50th anniversary, their daughter Meredith teaches at Roswell High School and lives in Roswell with her husband and children, and their son Matthew and his two children reside in Atlanta. Now, therefore, I, Courtney Wilson, Mayor of the City of Roswell, do hereby name Specialist Fifth Class Robert Anderson an esteemed veteran of Roswell and call upon all our citizens to recognize his outstanding service to our country and our community, and that there is no higher calling than those who have served in the United States Armed Forces.
Hold on to it, if you'll only. It looks like you got some here. This is for you.
I'd just like to, first of all, say thank you to the mayor and to the council for this honor, and, of course, to Robin, a friend named Rick, also a veteran, that nominated me for this. I would like to say that it allows a story to be told about being in the service and sharing what others went through as well. Of course, those veterans that also served during the Cold War period of 1947 to 1991, many served at flashpoints in Vietnam and in Korea, and, of course, to them, the ultimate tribute has to be paid. They were in harm's way. It's an honor for us tonight, and I would like to say that I read a quote recently by President Eisenhower in a biography where he talked about wanting to bring the Soviet leadership on an aerial tour of American communities, of course, communities like this one, Roswell, Georgia. And he wanted to do that to show them what America brings to its people and what a country this is to live in and be a part of. So we can all be grateful. I say, "Thank you, America. Thank you all, and thank you, Roswell, Georgia." Thank you.
One item I'm going to add to the agenda real quick here on the mayor's agenda that is not on your packet, if you're looking, is I am going to pass the baton to my colleague, Will Mortland, to talk about upcoming events here in Roswell. Councilman Mortland.
Hello, everybody. Real quick, I just wanted to share an amazing experience I had last night with the lyrics and leir with the beginning of Roswell Roots. It's a fantastic production, and really didn't know what to expect when we first showed up. Went with several residents as well as some of our council here, and to say that I was blown away would be an understatement. So fantastic, fantastic job with the Recreation, Parks, Historical Assets, Cultural Affairs Division, as well as the partner groups that are putting on the Roswell Roots production. So there are several booklets around City Hall that give plenty of detail on all the upcoming events this upcoming month, very much so highly, highly recommend going and seeing this. This is fantastic. That's all I have.
Thanks, Will. I know we talked about it last week at council. And Lee, what's that website again that people can go to to check out Roswell Roots?
Thank you, Mayor. It's roswellroots.com.
Roswellroots.com. Exactly.
This is the booklet. It's great. It's got a whole calendar inside of it of what you might miss if you aren't paying attention. So go to roswellroots.com, check it out. You won't be disappointed.
Sarah, I don't want to leave you out. Any of you want to add any? This is public. This is the last part on the mayor's agenda here, so it's free.
Sure. I believe there are tickets still available for Friday and Saturday's upcoming performance on The Life of Harriet Tubman. I'll be joining on Friday if anyone would like to come.
Thank you, Sarah. And Christine, since you are the senior member of the council, I'll leave you with the last word.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend last night, and it was really fabulous. The caliber of the performance was, it was just outstanding, and I look forward to the remainder of the events throughout the month, especially the Harriet Tubman and also the Black Opry, which will be on Friday night. I know there's tickets still available for that, but really great shows.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, council. What's that website again, Lee?
Roswellroots.com.
Thank you very much. 21 events left to check out on roswellroots.com. All right, that concludes the mayor's agenda for this specially-called election. Next is the Administration Department. Councilmember Hills, would you read the administration item, please?
Absolutely. As soon as I turn to the correct page here. Sorry about that. I was just going to announce elections, but I want to do it formally. Well, I guess it is, to talk about our municipal elections. So if I could have Deputy City Administrator Michael Fisher come, please. Am I following that protocol?
Whatever protocol you'd like to follow, Councilmember Hills.
I'm going to make that up. How about that? Mr. Fisher?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, I didn't mean to usurp our city administrator.
No, that is quite all right. Thank you so much. Of course, mayor and council, last Monday evening, there was a work session where we discussed the possibility of the city or cities taking over municipal elections from Fulton County. On last Tuesday, which would have been the 24th, there was a committee item which was discussed, and at that time, there were a couple of scenarios discussed for your review pertaining to potential costs of elections, reoccurring costs and initial costs, based on all of the items and ingredients that it would take potentially to hold a municipal election. I would remind, of course, the council, as you know, in 2021, when the municipal elections were held, the cost at that time from Fulton County was $373,000. We received, a few weeks ago, received a proposal from Fulton County that this year's elections, 2023, would be assessed at $677,000. And as a result, that spurred conversation and discussion, not only in the city of Roswell but other neighboring cities as well, to assess, evaluate, and potentially contemplate the city or cities conducting their own municipal elections. The city of Milton has been moving forward for quite some time. The city of Alpharetta last week did pass a resolution as well to move forward with municipal election option. Of course, based on the information provided at the committee meeting and work session last week, out of committee, this item was forwarded to mayor and council for more formal consideration of the city conducting municipal elections. And unless there are any further questions from mayor and council, I'll certainly turn it over to you, Mayor Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. Knighton. Thank you, Mr. Knighton. I'm going to turn it over to council. Are there any thoughts, comments, or questions? I think it's a pretty simple matter that the resolution is going to be tonight, and the resolution, David, just for clarification, that we are discussing is very simple in terms of its context. Would you just state it in a very simplified form, please, sir?
Yes, Mayor. The motion would be to take for the staff and to bring, to take all necessary actions to conduct municipal elections within the city of Roswell by the city of Roswell itself.
So tonight, the consideration before the council is the passage of a resolution to, for the senior staff?
Yes, Mayor.
To work on due diligence with its sister cities on pursuing and conducting municipal elections?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Okay. I open it up to council for any additional thoughts, comments, or questions. Councilmember Beeson.
Is this for due diligence related to any timeline? So say, for instance, it could be 2023 or 2025, or is it specifically for this year only?
Well, let me answer that. Obviously, ultimately, your determination is council, and I think the intent, if I were to answer that question from an intent purposes, is with the intent of trying to, attempting to move forward with an IGA with the sister cities in 2023. To the point of your question, I think it's very important to note, I talked to the mayor of Milton, as a matter of fact, this evening, on that very question to make sure that there was clarity, that if a process was not worked out to the satisfaction of the city of Roswell, the city of Milton, the city of Johns Creek, that obviously, at any point, relatively speaking during this process, it could be aborted and turned back over to Fulton County. And I think that's very important to know. So this is a commitment to go work together and say, "Hey, we'd like to pursue this in 2023 or 2025." The suggestion and urgency is around 2023, but I think it's important to your question, Sarah, to know is that can be aborted. So this is not a binding resolution, and even if you did pass a binding ordinance and say, "Hey, we're going to do municipal elections," our intent and our clarity is, if it didn't work out, we would bow and say, "Fulton County, you got it." So in other words, there's got to be clarity. I think everybody's on the same page. We're not going to head long into a disaster and say, "Okay, we got to do this no matter what." It's a great question. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
One more question. So I saw on Fulton County's website that Wednesday is their agenda item for discussion for setting in the fees for the municipalities. I have no idea. Has anyone from the city of Roswell or any of the other sister cities reached out to try to negotiate that fee in advance of Wednesday's meeting, since it seems to be that's the last day?
The short answer to that question is, with respect to the Wednesday meeting, there has been no contemporary negotiations on it. But there's a whole lot to unpack in that answer.
Totally understood. I just fear because Fulton County is going to be locking in their rate in the essence of due diligence on both ends, if anybody has made the effort to try to bring that rate down, since it is fairly high.
I would be happy for you to lead the charge for Roswell and all our sister cities, to lead the charge of bringing that down. Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, comments, or questions from council? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. One last one. When doing research on this as well, GMA or the Georgia Municipal Association website outlines on municipal elections that according to OCGA 21-2-101, they require all municipal election superintendents, registrars, absentee ballot clerks, blah, 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 anybody involved in administering the election to be certified and an additional level of certification through a program that's run by the Secretary of State within six months following their appointment. And I could be wrong on this, but the only certification program I could find was through the University of Georgia, which is similar to the legislative training that we receive when we start coming into office. I do mine in March. It looks like the registration for that is already closed, and it starts next week for that training. So if we were to hire a superintendent, is that going to preclude hiring to anybody who's previously taken that training before, since if we were to recruit them and want them to operate this year's elections, and they need that training, which is happening next week, is that going to be an issue?
I think that's a great question, and I don't want to pretend that I can answer any and all questions tonight on any and all subject matters. That would be disingenuous of me. The short answer to your question is, I believe the considerations would obviously be around a current elections official who's already certified, but I can't answer for, obviously, for other cities, because it's going to be a group effort if it's done. And so I don't want to preclude the answer there. Your point is well taken, and obviously would be a consideration on the 2023 election.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you. Counsel, any other thoughts or questions? David or Randy, did you want to add anything that I'm surely missed on those questions that Councilmember Beeson had?
No, I don't think so, Mayor. I think as part of this, if it is the will of mayor and council to move forward, we obviously, leadership staff would do all due diligence to ensure that potentially an election would be able to be held if it is the desire of mayor and council later this year or further out.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Knighton. Okay, so with no further comments or questions from council, I'd like to take it to our Roswell residents. And so at this time, there any Roswell residents that would like to speak on the matter of the potential of the city of Roswell moving forward to work on due diligence and have the senior staff work on due diligence, potentially trying to put a resolution, an IGA together to do a municipal election, which is really the matter at hand tonight? If there's any Roswell residents that would like to speak on that matter, the rules are very simple. Five minutes. You've got five minutes. When you come up, please state your name and where you live in Roswell, and Mr. Knighton will turn on a timer, and you'll see it up there. And look forward to hearing any great comments. So at this time, anybody would like to come speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Different subject, but it's okay, right?
No, sir. We're going to get, you're going to get public comment of being just a minute, Ron. Sorry. Sorry. No problem. Yes, sir. Mr. Walsh, do you want to speak on this matter? I'm not going to introduce you. I'll let you introduce yourself, and since we have a bigger crowd tonight.
My name is Jim Walsh. I live on the east side of Roswell, and I live at 8945 Terrace Club Drive. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the mayor, Mr. Davison, Mr. Knighton, and the majority of the council on taking this bold step in bringing our elections back into the city. My concern, in talking to the residents of East Roswell, and we've talked about this, is the fact that in the proposal of Fulton County, there is only one early voting spot, which is the Roswell Library right up here, which is going to put undue hardship, we feel, on East Roswell residents by not having a second early voting location, and especially with the fact that we had such a large turnout in the last campaign for early voting on the east side, that it will hinder that. And then add to that the fact that we go to paper ballots, the wait lines could be extremely long, which would be detrimental to the people waiting to go. I think this is a great idea. I think it's the right thing for us to do, and I applaud Lee and yourself and the rest of the council, Will, Christine, and Peter and Mike, if they were here. I'm doing this great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, ma'am. Since it's a big crowd tonight, I got to let you introduce yourself and where you live.
My name is Janet Russell, and I am a Roswell resident. In March, we'll be 50 years.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I never thought I'd live this long. If I did, I would have taken better care of myself. Just to speak to what Jim said about no East Roswell location, just a reminder that in the previous election, our library was closed on this side of town for 18 months. We didn't have an early voting location at all. And then they closed it. It was supposed to be six months. It was closed for 18 months, Fulton County, for unnecessary renovations to the front to accommodate the southern post development. And then it opened for seven weeks, and it closed for COVID. So we didn't have a library for 36 months on this side at all. No services from Fulton County, but we all got our property tax bills. So I think it's important, because there were no, I know people contend about drop boxes, but there were no drop boxes here either. So they haven't really been serving us. Secondly, I find the doubling of the price phenomenal. I know we have inflation, but it's not that bad. But I do think it's because they had to raise the salary of the poll workers, because nobody wanted to work during COVID. They used to pay like 90 bucks for the day, a 12-hour day. They had to raise it to 200, because no one would work the polls. So I think they're using inflated numbers based on a pandemic that we hope doesn't resume, and that's why they're doing it. It's called CYA. We all know what CYA means, and they're CYA-ing themselves again. The other thing I noted was, I was at the work session, was they said there were 75,000 registered voters in Roswell, which is pretty phenomenal, because we have a population of 95,000, and I think Wrenckin Parks has 10,000 children playing soccer. So that means that we have only another 10,000 children in Roswell? I don't think so. So they haven't covered the numbers or at least looked at the census that we just had two years ago, and it would be, I mean, they're not doing their work at all. And I think what you're doing is probably a good idea. We need to have accountability, and we need to know that our votes are very important. People all over the world are dying, just for we take what we take for granted. However, Fulton County has really been just derelict in the services they provide to the city of Roswell. I don't have sewer. I don't get Fulton County water. I didn't have a library. You know, it was just up yours. But send us your tax money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Yes, ma'am. Are you coming up? Hi, welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Good morning. My name is Erin Bromley. I live in 1070 Martin Rich Road in East Roswell. I am an IT architect during the day, but I, for the last few years, I've actually been registered voters in Roswell, which is pretty phenomenal because we have a population of 95,000. And I think Wrenckin-Parks has 10,000 children playing soccer. So that means that we have only another 10,000 children in Roswell? I don't think so. So they haven't covered the numbers or at least looked at the census that we just had two years ago. And it would be, I mean, they're not doing their work at all. And I think what you're doing is probably a good idea. We need to have accountability, and we need to know that our votes are very important. People all over the world are dying, just for we take what we take for granted. However, Fulton County has really been just derelict in the services they provide to the City of Roswell. I don't have sewer. I don't get Fulton County water. I didn't have a library. You know, it was just up yours. But send us your tax money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Yes, ma'am. Are you coming up? Hi, welcome. Please share with us your name and where you live.
Good morning. My name is Erin Bromley. I live in 1070 Martin Ridge Road in East Roswell. I am an IT architect during the day, but I, for the last few years, I've actually been a Fulton County poll worker, actually out there in the ground for a few years now. I reviewed the video from last Monday, and I have a lot of comments on it. And yesterday I sent you all an email. I'm sure some, I know some of them already received it. And so this is just a summary of those comments. I'd be happy to get together with you with more insight on what I see from what came out of that meeting, because like I said, I'm on the trenches every November. Mayor, you said that voting is sacrosanct to our republic. So then why are we pushing this change and trying to get all the processes, infrastructure, and people needed one following very complex election rules, guidelines, and laws less than nine months when advanced voting starts? We need to give an answer to Fulton on the fees on Wednesday, and we're still on working Like I said, the person who's supposed to be in charge, our superintendent, has to be certified, otherwise we have a very small pool of recruits, if we really want to have somebody. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I totally agree. If we can find a way that we can do it cheaper, that's fine. I just don't understand what is the rush of having this in November? I understand that we're going from a 296 per voter as a cost to 9.38. So, and it is a big jump. Now, they've been charging this for a lot of years. So you got to cut inflation, right? You got to cut costs. Do you want to do it for cheap, or do you want to do it right? Right? Are we here just taking it over just to shave costs wherever? Or do we want it to do it the right way because we want to eliminate deficiencies in their system so we can improve it? Right? If we look more closely and we save, for example, 4,000 each cycle going forward, is that really worth having the complexity and all the staff and all the things that, one more project for Roswell that, you know, is saving us like $4,000 a cycle? I'm not saying it's $4,000, but just saying, you know, if we save a million dollars, fine. But if you're saving like $20,000, is it really worth taking it for that $20,000 in Roswell overall is not that long, you know, that big item? So I want to make sure that what we're doing makes sense in the long run. Not only that, you know, if you don't participate on this and we wait for the next municipal cycle, we would have all the data from this cycle to make our assumptions. We will know how many people are voting, what areas are better to vote, we will know how many workers we need. We will have so much data on how to base to make sure that we are actually saving and where all that money can be spent off. You know, it's very different, municipal elections in general have very different budgeting. And I know because I've been there, right? So, you know, this is a great working experience, not only for you, but also for candidates. You know, they can also learn about, you know, how to, there's different mailings, different ways you can act them depending on where they are. So again, yes, it's a big jump, but I don't think we have time right now to fix it. Yes, they gave us a raise. I was there when we were paid very little. It is hard. You're there from seven to seven. You are not allowed to leave the site. Not only with dealing with cranky people, you have to be there before seven. I actually have to get there at 5:00 in the morning to set up. And we don't leave until we deliver the stuff, which is at 10 o'clock in the afternoon, sorry, at night. So you're not going to be able to find people who are going to, oh, I'm going to be a poll worker. You need hundreds of them. Fulton County already has a problem trying to staff every election. Every election, I'm like, can you come? Can you come? I'm trying to recruit people. I just don't see how in nine months you can get all this infrastructure going. So again, this is a whole email, it's super long. I have very detailed, there were a lot of assumptions mentioned in the meeting that were completely incorrect regarding the handling of the roll calls, the voting rolls in the Secretary of State as well as Fulton County. And I would like to explain it to you with more detail later, as well as the requirements for clerks, managers, absentee ballots, handling, and communications to the voters that the county is supposed to have. And so it's all here, and I'm happy to give you that information if necessary. I also have a training manual for Fulton.
Thank you, Ms. Bromley. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Welcome, sir. How are you doing?
Hi.
Hi, please share with us who you are and where you live.
Where's the mic? Am I?
Yes, sir, you're good. That's fantastic.
I put my card in there already. My name is Michael Gordon. I live 214 Wellward Court in Roswell.
Hey, Michael.
Been a resident of Roswell for many years. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you all for serving. I really appreciate it. I think you're doing a great job. And I think that election integrity is very, very important. And I think that our principle of self-government in this country is very relevant today. And I think that our local elections are our local concern. So it makes perfect sense to me that we would run that locally, because, you know, we are the ones who have the interest, and I believe in your ability to do a good job. I don't think that's the issue. So I think it's just the right thing to do, and it makes sense to do it locally. But more than that, it's other things to consider. I went to the meeting in Milton where they passed that resolution and learned that there's going to be several hundred thousand dollar savings by doing it themselves. The cost, you know, Fulton is raising the price, and they charge per registered voter, not necessarily the people who actually vote. And of course, we've also discovered that there's a lot of people on that, you know, there's issues with the voter list, so it's not always, you know, some people, there's duplicates and things like that. So to base the cost on something like that is not the best way to do it, I think. And so by doing it locally, we can fix those problems ourselves, which is really a great thing. And in the process, we'll save a lot of money. So several hundred thousand dollars for one item is great, you know, saving taxpayers' money is always a good idea. Also, I've been in IT my career, and I understand that computers can make mistakes, there can be programming errors, there can be issues. And, you know, while a lot of people think that's ridiculous that that didn't happen, it did happen in Decatur, where there was a story you may be familiar with, a husband and wife, the wife was running for office, and in their precinct, they voted for themselves, obviously, or for her, and they looked at the results and they got zero votes. So they knew there was a problem, even if it was just their two votes that were not counted. So as a result of that, they petitioned, and they got a recount, and they did a manual recount of the paper ballots that were produced. And the numbers that they came up with were totally different than the numbers that the machine said. And the results were reversed, and the person who won came in last, and the person who was in last came in first. I mean, it was all messed up. And the problem is with machines, you cannot validate that unless you verify that by counting the paper ballots. So I'm a big believer in paper ballots. I think it's more reliable. And whether or not there actually is fraud, it's better to use a system that you can make it more accountable. And I think paper ballots would do that. And on top of that, saving money and having local control of a local, very important local issue is the way to go. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gordon. Thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody's comments. Yes, sir. Welcome. Glad you're here. Please share with us your name and where you live, and glad you're here.
Me too. My name is Scott Gardner. I live at 12030 Brookfield Club Drive. Actually, I just really have questions initially. IGA stands for what? I've used it a couple of times.
David, I'll let you as the attorney, since everybody knows it, you can say it in your dissonance. Go ahead, David.
It's an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. So there's no feasibility study been done on this at all to determine possible costs and things like that? Is that correct? Is that what the proposal is going to be doing? Having a feasibility study to determine what the costs will be? Do we know how much the machines cost, for example?
We've done a workshop, and we've done a committee meeting where we began to explore those costs. What this meeting is for is to, for us to further explore the reality of putting this together with our sister cities, and that includes a lot of due diligence.
So the due diligence will take care of looking at the costs to see if this really makes sense?
Yes, sir. And the costs haven't already been publicly put out there? Yes, sir.
From the conversation, I got the intent, I got the sense that no one here has gone to Fulton to push back on the price to see if they can reduce it, or to get an explanation of why it's increased so much.
I, well, Councilmember Beeson kind of asked that question, and that's when I kind of mentioned to Sarah.
That's why I asked the question.
I kind of mentioned to Sarah that that is a gigantic, remember, we spent six months just negotiating lost. All of this is not tangential, there's related. This year, we'll be denunciating service delivery with county, all 15 cities. There's a lot of pieces to this equation. So it's very hard to compartmentalize and say it's just one area when there's a lot of other pieces that are tied into this. So, but for this separate piece, Fulton County has said the price on municipal elections that they hold, the pricing is going to go up significantly. So it began to, for the North Fulton cities to say, wow, that it looks like that's a problem, perhaps we should do something about that, and perhaps now is a great time. That's what this discussion is about.
I understand. My question is, did we, or any of the cities, go back to Fulton and ask them to explain?
Yes, we've had, yes, to answer your question is, there's been numerous conversations with Fulton County. There's ongoing engagements with Fulton County. It's not done in a vacuum. And as you probably saw on the workshop last week, part of the perception that we're getting very clearly is from Fulton County, and they cannot, they don't, I don't think want to be ultimately very clear about that, is we're getting the sense they don't want to do the municipal elections. So adds further to the problem. So there's, you know, and this is, we're in the, so we're talking about the world of politics and the world of government, where sometimes you're getting one message and then another one's coming across at a different level and a different text, in a different context. But yes, sir, you're here to make comments. I'm actually, and I apologize, I've gotten into a Q and A, so.
Oh, that, I, I did want to make a question. So I had several other questions about, running about the cost and what have you. If they're discussed in the workshop, that's online, I can look at it?
Yes, sir. And just to be fair to your question of the questions, not all the questions can be answered tonight, because there is beginning, Milton has been in serious due diligence. Milton came to Johns Creek, Alpharetta, Mountain Park, and to Roswell and said, we've been doing serious due diligence on this, we'd like to meet with you and tell you what we've discovered. That began the serious consideration by myself and then talking to my colleagues on the council of saying, Milton's done some work on this, and we understand Fulton County looks like they're significantly raising the cost, and there's some other issues. Perhaps this is an opportunity for us as sister cities to move forward on this. That's really what this discussion's been about. So there's been a lot of, and so we did a workshop on this where we began to share some of that information. In committee, we began to share some information. But by no means is all the, or all the I's dotted and all the T's crossed. And I don't want anybody to have that impression tonight.
In the discussion with the other cities, is there going to be sharing of like machines, then?
Sharing of machines?
Machines, or is it, they'll be just, you plan on just buying Roswell machines?
No, part of the discussion when you sign an IGA is what is, what is the agreement between the cities? How are we going to act? How are you going to hold your elections? And part of that first component, which you may have seen in the workshop and the committee meeting, is, is the key first part of that is the election superintendent. That's the question. What is your pool of election superintendents? Because there's certain criteria that guide that in state law.
That's another recurring cost, yes. Not to mean, not to exclude keeping everything secure and any potential lawsuits that we're trying to avoid, which is undoubtedly why part of Fulton County's cost went up, because of lawsuits. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming, and glad you came from Brookfield. Always glad to have the Brookfield folks show up. Can't have enough Brookfield folks come on. All right, any other, yes, sir. Welcome. I, of course, know who you are, but since we've got a big audience, possibly if you let everybody know who you are and where you live, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. My name is Michael Delchero. I live at 1075 Churchill Lane. I had the good pleasure to observe the meeting and workshop last week. And I have a special request. I'm not quite sure if this could be provided for our attendees this evening. Is that PowerPoint available by chance from the sessions last week that outlines Option
Are you asking for it to be put up right now?
Yes, maybe perhaps as a point of personal privilege and perhaps for the rest of the attendees this evening, just to look at some more of some written details about the models and estimated or forecasted prices.
I think with all due respect, this is really your opportunity to comment on what we have done or have done. We can put that up, but I don't, as I've just said a few minutes ago, not every question will be answered tonight, because what the council's considering is the motion to move forward in formal discussions with other cities to continue to go through for due diligence. So not every question previously, or every topic brought has, is the final answer. And so I think for the purposes of that discussion, if it's the desire to analyze that information and to say, is this the reasoning for the decision? I would say that is not. The reasoning for the decision is Fulton County has notified they're going up on their price. Milton has been doing due diligence on the subject. Milton got with us, our sister cities, and said, hey, looks like we got a problem. Fulton County's going up on the election. And we're all getting the sense, wink, wink, that they don't want to do the municipal elections. So we got a problem. So this is permission, because council is going to make permission as the elective body to say, does it make sense to move forward in discussions, to seriously move forward on the possibility of doing an IGA and signing an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, with our sister cities to hold municipal elections? And there is a lot there, Michael, there's a lot. I mean, there's no shortage. And that's why, if you probably noticed, Roswell was the only of the sister cities, I see one of our sister cities' city councilmen here, welcome. Roswell's the only city that's actually done a workshop, committee, and a council. The other cities are just putting on council. Being Roswell, we are trying to put more information in the public domain before we just say, let's go to, let's, hey, do a resolution, get forward. I want to say, though, the same process is taking place with our sister cities and us. This is us going through serious due diligence, working on the information that Milton's had and expounding upon that, and then if signing an IGA, all having to negotiate what are the terms of that. So, and all that will be public. There's, none of this is going to be in hiding. So I didn't, sorry if I went on too long, Michael.
Oh, no problem, Mayor, no problem. Just a friendly request. So I wanted to continue forward with a little bit more of a backdrop. I think that we would all agree with these remarks that we know we're all endowed by our Creator, you know, these enabled rights. And to go further down, we got our Bill of Rights. And, you know, that includes our right to vote.
Michael, would you like, I don't want to interrupt you, and I'll give you that time back.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to get that presentation and put it up? Is that what you want this to get done? I can get that done. I believe Mr. Knight says he can get that done.
That would be very kind. If that's possible, wonderful. If not, I'll just proceed ahead.
It's, well, just, yeah, it's relation to your time. I don't want you to, you got, I think, four minutes left, so I don't want you to, I want you to have the value of that time. We can spend, we can, if you want to wait, we'll see if we can get it up and put it up, if you want to wait, or if you want to continue with your comments, totally up to you.
I can wait for a minute or two.
Yeah, and by the way, I know you don't have it with you. Obviously, anything that's been presented in previous committee meetings or workshops, we are happy to put that out, send that out to anybody that wants it, at any time, just FYI. So that is, it is public information meant for public consumption.
Sir?
Okay, these are, Michael, these are the two slides that are shown in the workshop. Is this what you're waiting for, sir?
So let me, if I may, I'll address this very quickly. These are the items that were, that were displayed at our committee meeting, actually, last Tuesday. were, that were displayed at our committee meeting, actually, last Tuesday. This is a proposal A. This was presented at work session. This proposal A would entail four, four early voting sites. Again, as someone alluded to earlier, Fulton County is proposing only one, four early voting sites, and 12 on day of election. And here's the proposed cost. The first year cost total at about $498,000. And then total recurring costs thereafter estimated at about $406,000. That was based, again, on four early voting sites and 12 day of election. Now, if you could go to proposal B, Michael, here's a summary sheet of proposal B. This would entail two early voting sites and 21 day of election sites. As you can see, the first year early voting cost, or excuse me, the first year cost would be at $516,000. And then the recurring cost would be estimated at about $357,000. And that is, again, two early voting locations and 21 day of voting locations. Currently, Fulton County provides 21 early voting, or excuse me, 21 day of election polling locations. And again, the proposal was for one. This proposal shows two early voting locations. And you can see those estimated costs from both of those proposals, which were presented at the committee meeting last week.
And just as an example, that's why I have not, we've not, we're just at, we're treating the matter with a little less, the information provided in the workshop and committee meeting a little more specific, a little less specific tonight. For example, since the presentation in this committee, Councilmember Beeson actually discovered and discovered last Thursday that she believes that the Fulton County machines will be allowed for us to use legally without cost. In other words, these numbers would be reduced. But I don't even want to enter that into the public discussion because what I want to get to is get to permission for us to move forward and further go down the line of getting this potentially done, whether there be further elimination of numbers. So I don't want to sell it too hard like, hey, I think there's a positive here. I think there's actually some lower numbers. I don't want to do that. Because the purpose is our council after, after workshop and committee is making a determination to move forward with the other cities on full, full-fledged discussions on IGA with the staff to say, let's move forward and getting permission to do that. Yes, sir. Now the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Knighton as well. And thank you, Mr. Fisher. The, the, the reason I wanted to, if I may, just have like a review or rehash of this information, is just to go ahead and talk about that there's certainly size and scale we're talking about and the cost of an apparatus to land this plane consistent with the new state legislation. And it's already January 30th. Elections are going to be naturally coming up beginning this August for filing with the election in November. And I get it, you know, the costs were definitely, they went up. It was not two plus dollars to nine plus dollars per voter. It's a big bill. And I, and I would do the same thing. It's time to do a discussion and review all about it. So it's a bit of a hot potato moment. It's also, if I could call it, it's a, you know, it's may call it a bit of kryptonite as well, too. Our country, the last recent years, has encountered divides and separations across our communities, local and nationally. And what I was trying to say before the papers is that we have, we have our rights. We have the Bill of Rights. And we have people who have fought and died for these freedoms and liberty. And it's great that we see an opportunity. But I think it's increasingly more important that quality, cost, and the speed is all factored into this discussion, to the point where there's still going to be secure elections, fair elections, and also like accessible. One model showed two early voting, no, the first model had four early voting stations and like 17 election day stations, if I'm not mistaken.
12.
12. Thank you. And the second model, option B, reduced early voting to two, but for election day was 21. So I'm just presenting out there that whatever model is to be afforded to us, that we don't compromise on the sacred right of security. Another thing I want to point out, as a point of caution, is the hiring of the superintendent. My company does do real estate solutions, but I've also been recruiting for the greater part of 27 years and trying to go about an objective, above-board, transparent interview process and the selection of the person and the background checks and all that most certainly needs to be done as well. And I strongly do suggest that. So in the spirit of our time, I want to thank you, but I'll leave it to the rest of the citizens. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Michael. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your, your thoughts, sir. Yes, ma'am. Bob, Sarah, I'm coming back. I promise. You got.
No, I just wanted to clarify the point that you had made about the research. So I, I did find the citation for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's OCGA 21 dash 2 dash 45. And the line is that counties may not levy a fee for use of state-owned machines. So if they're already purchased through the state, you cannot double charge. So to clarify the language of what he was referencing and where that came from.
Well, appreciate your hard work on finding that. Any other Roswell residents? Yes, sir. Welcome. How are you, sir?
Good. How are you all?
Outstanding?
Pretty good. I guess this is, will this work if?
Only if you tell us your name and where you live. That's the only way it works. It won't work otherwise.
Billy Bob from Gainesville, Florida. No. It's Matt Ronzak, 3001 Vickery Trace.
Thanks, ma'am.
And will it just, I need to push a button or anything?
We'll get you some help. One second.
All right. So several months ago, I shared with many of you some findings from an internal financial audit that Fulton County, their own auditor, conducted on their elections department. So this came out in August of 2021. If you haven't had a chance to read it or skim it yet, you're in luck. I brought a copy. And I also wanted to share this information again because our community needs to know this as well. And I don't think much of the community does know it. So this is on page two of the report that came out. The table of content shows these nine findings and one concern. And I'll go through, for sake of time, just a few examples. So in finding number one, they had no standard operating procedures. But when we talk about developing procedures for Roswell and other cities, there's really only upside. And I'll quote the auditor. "We noted that the aforementioned procedures submitted by the department were not complete. More specifically, the procedures were not dated, and the purpose was not clearly defined. As a result, we were not able to determine the relevancy of some of the procedures submitted or if the procedures were current." And finding number two, again, I'm going to quote the auditor. So this is relevant to inconsistent procurement procedures. So, quote, "Upon reviewing purchasing documentation from the department, it was noted that purchase orders were generated after the receipt of the invoices from the vendor." So approximately 2.4 million of the 4.4 million was the case. So over 50% of the invoices came in before the purchase orders. In the real world, usually you get fired for that. In finding number four, again, to quote the auditor, "So lack of supporting documentation, we sampled invoices for transactions that occurred during the scope of our audit and noted the department did not maintain records for professional services, including overtime totaling almost $2 million. This is the result of inadequate management and oversight of the contract as vendor invoices should be verified internally against the department's records. Management informed us that the verbal agreement between the vendor was $450,000. However, Fulton County was billed four times that amount." And last example, finding number six, inadequate safeguarding of assets. To quote the auditor, "We performed an onsite audit of inventory, which consisted of 260 Cradle Point routers at a cost of $365 each, or about $95,000 in total. We noted that 15 or 6% of the routers could not be physically located. We were informed that the routers may have been sent to the wrong department for storage. However, as of the report date, the department has not located these items." So I think you get the, the theme here. When I first read this report, I was shocked and had utter, you know, it's, to see something like this, to be blunt, it's complete disregard, incompetence, or both. And this is our elections department for our county. Kind of a big deal, I would think. Again, we've talked about, you know, more recently, the city of Milton and their feasibility study. Their cost increase from 2019 to 2021, as we're seeing here, that's been quoted for 23, was 103%. I think if we were to go ask our boss for a 103% raise, he or she would probably laugh at us, unless you are more than a superstar. So at the end of the study, Milton said they would save approximately $115,000 this year. That was based on roughly $6 per registered voter. We now know, literally a week after that meeting, Fulton County told them it was going to be $11.48. So honestly, you can't even trust Fulton County because they might be telling us $9 today. They could go back to $11 or $12 tomorrow. That is not an exaggeration. So separate from the cost, we have a pattern of Fulton County being unreliable and unpredictable. I guess I mentioned that. With the track record of Fulton County and now their disinterest in conducting municipal elections, Mayor, you mentioned that, they have not only expressed that, they have literally said it in Board of Elections and Board of Commissioner meetings. So with this track record.
Thank you, Matt. I'm sorry. I got to cut you off.
But with this track record and that on top of it?
Yep. I'm sorry. I got to cut you off. Thank you, though.
I think it's a clear decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. It's another brand-new person to the podium. Welcome, sir. Please make sure you tell everybody who you are, where you live.
I will. I'm Alan Sales. I live in Ellard on the east side of Roswell. You know, and not too long ago, in a conversation, I quoted G.K. Chesterton, who said, "We should keep our politics close enough that we can kick it in the shin." And so all of us are here, all of us are here because we believe in the effectiveness of local control in government and local autonomy. And so I rise to support the initiative to bring this responsibility back as close as possible to the people of Roswell. And I also appreciate in particular, Kurt, the diligence that you did with the other mayors to find out that if this is a problem and we are unable to fulfill this successfully, we can push it back. I think that was a great find, and I appreciate that. And I trust your judgment on that as a council because we, as the citizens of Roswell, can indeed kick you in the shin. And that's unusual. That's, this is that level of government where we can do that. So I appreciate that. But I also want to support Sarah's instinct that we should put forward, put forth a, a good faith counter to the, to the Fulton County and get, call their bluff. So I think that's a great idea, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Kick in the shin, baby. That's, 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 I can tell you, being mayor, I get kicked in the shin, the butt, the head. It's one constant kick. All right. Any other Roswell residents that would like to speak on this particular matter at hand? Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Glad you're here tonight.
Good evening. I'm Lucia Frazier. I live at 485 Hardscrabble Road in Roswell. I fully support Roswell running our own municipal elections, using paper ballots. That's how we used to run elections. It's nothing new. And many cities are currently running their own municipal elections right now. So the process is nothing new as well. And also, I have seen and experienced firsthand all the inefficiencies in Fulton's operations. I've worked as a poll worker in both early and election day. And these inefficiencies cost us taxpayers a lot of wasted money. Keeping things simple is the way to go. And I want to just remind, anybody who has any concerns over, you know, us going through this process is this is just municipal. It's very, very small compared to a presidential election. Fulton runs municipal elections at the same scale as a presidential election. They give us the same number of machines in the precincts. It's a lot of wasted money. You don't need that much, you don't need that many resources. You don't need that many people. You don't need that many days. You don't need that many hours for municipal. All of it will save us a lot of money. Using paper ballots is a huge cost savings. It reduces the spider web of election processes down to one thread. When you have touchscreens and scanners and printers, you have tons of training and maintenance, and still poll workers misuse them. And the equipment needs replacing. I was at a training with all managers and assistant managers, and not a single one of them realized that you're not supposed to wipe the touchscreen with a wet rag. They would spray them, and, and the instructor about fell over when she found out. This was just a few months ago. So they should all know that, but they don't. And they have had to replace the equipment because of that every year. You also have malfunctions and worries about electrical power. The scariest thing while being a poll worker is showing up to your precinct at 5:00 AM and not knowing if your equipment is going to work. I cannot sleep the night before I have to work. It is the scariest thing in the world. I do not want to come in and have to tell somebody they can't vote. It is, it is so scary. And I'm responsible for that. So the equipment itself has also shown to misrepresent voter selections. You heard the DeKalb County example, so I don't need to go through that again. Shift work, that's another item that we can implement to avoid overtime pay and save a ton of money and save our health. It's extremely exhausting to work all 19 days for 16 hours a day. I saw clerks falling asleep at their station. Finding poll workers would be a lot easier if you had people who could do shifts and could pick their days and pick their hours. And you would have a lot more people willing to work. The reason why Fulton County has trouble staffing their elections is because nobody wants to work 19 straight days. They require it. They do not allow you to miss any time. And they don't have to. They just choose to do it that way. You don't have to do it that way. The second reason it's really hard to find poll workers for Fulton County is because they ignore. They ignore people's application to work. It took me many months of showing up in their face and making public comments and saying, I'm willing to work, before they finally acknowledged me. And I know plenty of people who never got calls back on wanting to work. We won't have that problem here. We have plenty of people willing to work, and we will acknowledge them. And having that local power, local election power, will help us make this much more efficient, much more easier, and much more transparent. The last item I just want to mention, as we move forward in this, please just focus on Roswell operations. Keep it simple. I would skip the multi-city role at this point if it slows you down. Just move forward. Because it is very possible to do this in nine months. It's not, as long as the process is simple, because if you use paper ballots, it's simple, it's not that hard. It's, it's very easy. And you already have Milton's footprint. Just copy and paste with our own staff. We don't necessarily have to, you have all the cities agree on one way if it's going to slow us down. We can move forward on this. We can interpret the code. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Frazier. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Jason Frazier, 485 Hardscrabble Road, Roswell, Georgia. I didn't speak with the, the prior speaker prior to, to coming here about this, even though we, we might live at the same address. But I did want to reiterate on a few things that she had mentioned, such as Fulton But I did want to reiterate on a few things that she had mentioned, such as Fulton County does not staff elections or run elections with the mind of saving costs. I mean, I worked the municipal election the last go around as a, as a poll tech. I've worked as a poll tech several elections now. I'll tell you, working 17 days as a poll tech during early voting is painful for multiple reasons. One, that many days of early voting, nobody, I mean, it is, it is very quiet, we'll say, the first, pretty much until the last couple of days. Then everybody shows up. I mean, it's, it's, it's too many days, and they staff it the same, they staffed it the same as a presidential election. They had the same machines. I mean, if you're only selecting a couple names on that ballot, you don't need all that equipment. I mean, my background, I have a strong manufacturing background, finance background, so it is just painful for me to watch an operation that is not properly utilizing the equipment. I mean, they, in this runoff, I mean, critical path is the check-in stations. They didn't have enough check-in stations. They had plenty of equipment. I mean, you're just clicking two names. They bring in too much equipment. They're not, they're not maintaining it properly, they're not managing it properly. They don't care, it's not their money, in my, my opinion. I mean, they're backcharging you guys, so again, why do they care? And that's what I've seen time and time again. I spoke to, as on voter rolls quite a bit, there's a lot of problems there. Even Janet, she mentioned, it sure does appear that there are too many people on the Roswell voter rolls. Granted, we want everyone to vote, but we don't want people registered twice. We don't want people that don't live here anymore, that have moved out of state. I've spent plenty of time on the rolls, and a lot of times, I find somebody that it looks like they live in Alabama, they live in Texas, they live, they, they don't live here anymore, but Fulton County has no vested interest in removing them. Again, cost savings to them is not a cost savings to you. So what's the incentive? And I've been struggling to get them to remove names of people that live at the UPS boxes. Even last night, I found my new favorite address. That was a blighted house in Atlanta, broken-out window, vines all the way up to the door. 20 people registered there. Nobody voted, but 20 people registered there. If that were here, you'd be paying for 20 people. They clearly don't live at that house because there were vines up to the door, plywood on the windows, another broken, nobody lives there, nobody's lived there for years. 20 people, come on, guys. They don't care. We care. If you see something like that in Roswell, first off, I'll tell you, but hopefully, you'll have somebody that's maintaining the rolls and looking at this and reducing your cost. If you don't have enough staff at one precinct, like this runoff, there were no wait lines in South Fulton. There were massive wait lines on the north. They could have redeployed resources, and I'm sure that's what we would do. If there's a lot of people at the Roswell library, not at the other library, move somebody over. You know, change that, change that rate determining step, make it smooth, allow people to vote. So anyway, I guess the last point I wanted to make is, sure, we, we're short on time to make it, make it happen this year, but let's be honest, most of you, if not everyone here, went to college, you know, you study the night before a lot of times. That's when you really get the work done. If we would have started this three years ago, we would have probably been here today cranking it out last minute. All right? So we can do this. And again, let's be honest, if it's paper ballots, how complicated can that truly be? I've done poll tech training several times, manager training, clerk training. I haven't done those, but I've talked to several people that have. That's very complicated. If you need to count this, I can teach you how to count this. It's not that difficult. Cost will be reduced if the training is simple. All right? So you guys can do this. If you can't, I'll be very disappointed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Frazier. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Well, that's unusual, somebody gets applause. Usually, it's boos. Any other Roswell residents would like to speak on this? Welcome. How you doing?
Sure.
How are you? Great, thank you, sir.
My name is Brian Dunn, 220 Thistlewood Lane, Roswell. Brian Dunn, 220 Thistlewood Lane, Roswell. Where is the mic?
You're doing great. Perfect, just like that. Just, yes, speak clearly into it.
Thank you for considering this. Just like to start off saying Fulton County has been overcharging the cities to run their own municipal elections, and now they want to gouge the cities. Like was said previously, the cost per registered voter has gone from three to six, and now they're talking about it being more than nine. Based on the findings from Milton's feasibility studies, they'll easily save more than $150,000, which means Roswell can save a significant amount of money. Fulton County has also expressed they prefer cities, like you said, to run their own municipal elections. They really don't want to do it anyway. Many Roswell residents who have worked the polls, who are tempted to work the polls, have had very poor experiences with Fulton County, to say the least, like has been discussed. This is a great opportunity to engage the community that wants to help and create positive environment. Sometimes things happen for a reason, right? We have an opportunity here, let's not kick the can down the road. I'd say, take this opportunity and let's do it. All I see is nothing but an upside here, whether it is from a financial perspective or a community involvement perspective. It makes a lot of sense for Roswell to run its own municipal elections, and paper ballots are the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, sir, very much. Scott, I see you, I get you to come up, you got a computer. Welcome. How are you, sir? Make sure you tell everybody who you are. We got a lot of people here tonight and where you live, Scott. Thank you, sir.
I'm Scott Long, 1055 Martin Ridge Road. And yeah, I would like to thank all of y'all for taking this on. Councilmember Beeson, Hall, Morthlin, Hills, Vanstrom, and Mike Plamow, and the mayor too. Y'all are all clearly taking this head-on, not pushing back and seeing it as a real issue that needs to be solved. It's, doesn't really seem to be just about the cost either. I think, as some people have alluded, it looks like Fulton County is forcing an issue on us, and they've sent us a lot of messages that I see in the letters and presentations that they just don't want to do this anymore. The letter they sent that was in our Roswell Agenda said they're willing to run the elections for municipalities. However, quote, "We encourage municipalities to explore alternative election methods." And then in the presentation in October from Nadine Williams, the Fulton County Registration Election Director, she made a PowerPoint where the first two slides were basically, "We want the cities to be running these." So one of the quotes off the slide said, "Department of Registration of Elections is scheduled to relocate operations to new election central location in 2023. The relocation will be a massive and time-consuming effort, along with preparation for the 2024 election. We are proposing to the Board of Registration of Elections to strongly encourage municipalities to conduct their own election in 2023." It's almost like a cry of help, for help from the Fulton County election. It's, they are very clear with their message. On the next slide, the very next slide, repeating themselves with Board of Registration Election Approval, the Department of Registration of Elections encourages municipalities to conduct their own election. And then on that slide, they've got three or four or five different ways to run elections on their own. So they're also showing us how to do it. And so the price, to me, is almost just indicative of their almost cry for help to not do anymore. I don't think it's even just they're trying to gouge us or anything like that. And the Roswell View article actually had them starting, saying the price was going to be $11.50 per registered voter, and there's already been some negotiation with, I guess, internally, to lower, to quote, "Lower to $9.38," down from, you know, which is still way up from the, what, $2.96 cents they had been charging us. And we have to remember, they charged us that for the general election, but if there's a runoff, and Roswell has lots of runoffs, because we have a lot of people that, thankfully, that want to serve, and often ends up in a runoff, so we've got to pay twice. We've got to pay $650K for the first one and the $650K for the second one. But again, I don't really even think it's necessarily a cost thing as much as Fulton County is saying they just want to get out of the business. And you don't necessarily want somebody who's, doesn't want to be doing, running elections to be the ones running your elections, because you may not get the attention that you want. I'm sure they would do a very, you know, fully legal, compliant way to do it, but still, if they're reluctant, that's not necessarily who you want. I would encourage us to not go, do anything alone, not go it alone. Join up with our sister cities, try to find critical mass. I think the kind of bigger critical mass you have, the better chance you have to pull it off. When you're small, you don't have critical mass, you can't do things. The analogy I was sharing the other day is, think about, it's not exactly the same thing, but think about Martin, Mountain Park's inability to muster up a police force or a fire department. They're too small, they don't have enough resources, and so they're having to ask us to help them with things like that. We get this, we're already bigger, so we have a better chance of doing that, but if we get the cities together, we're more likely to be able to pull it off. And also, you know, we'll solve problems together. One city has a problem, the other city, other cities can help, it can be solved, you know, at a bigger, at a larger scale, so. And if we do hire, you know, if we go, go together with the cities, hire an election director, let the professionals guide us. That director may say, "We can pull this off in 2023." They may say, you know, "Gosh, I really don't think, I don't feel safe committing to that. Let's do it another year," but start the process, I think, because Fulton County's forced the issue, and I appreciate all of y'all looking at it.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, sir. Thanks so much. Any other Roswell residents who would like to speak on this particular matter? Being that there are no other Roswell residents, I'm going to bring it back to council. Council, any additional thoughts or questions on this topic? It's Roswell resident, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. It's a Roswell matter, there's four Roswell residents are discussing this particular matter. Thank you, though. Yeah, he's here for open mic. That's Ron Parker, and he's here for open mic. Ron, this, my apologies, sir, it's 8:25. This meeting will be over, I think, soon. It may not be. And as soon as this meeting's over, there'll be another meeting, which will be the open, if you will, the open-mic night. So just bear with us a few more minutes. This is, this meeting's related to the matter at hand. Councilmember Hills.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. I'm very excited to be bringing this forward tonight. I've been working on, not as quick, not as much, the last year because I've been doing this other side hustle, city council member role, but I'm very interested in, in bringing our elections home, where they belong, run by our own people, our own residents, or residents of Fulton County, for that matter. I'm fine with that. But I spoke with our city attorney, David Davidson, a year ago about this, and he assured me it could be done in nine months. I think that the pace that this mayor and council has chosen to take the past year to address and execute and close the books on items is a testament of what we can do. We are not here to fool around. So I have no qualms with pulling this off in nine months whatsoever, and I don't think any of our sister cities have any qualms with that either. So I want to put that to rest. I know that people are concerned, but you have my pledge that this will be at a pace that will not drop the ball. It'll be a pace that we execute with fidelity, and that we will continue to move forward, that we do what we're supposed to be doing, and that's representing our citizens, our residents, our voting residents, the best that we can in a way that everybody can understand it's been done right, no matter the outcome. The taxpayer savings is just a no-brainer. If you don't know all the details of elections, the money alone should give you a pretty good idea of what we're looking at. I'm not a fan of how Fulton County has run things. I'll leave it at that tonight. And then two things I would love for Councilmember Morthlin to mention, a poll, poll worker recruiting event that we hosted here. I attended, but I'd like him to give testimony on that. And then also, the city administrator in his past life is from Gwinnett, where they, all their cities run their own municipal elections, and I think that is a huge asset to the great city of Roswell, that we have someone with experience that can run interference on some things, ask questions, you know, poke holes in, in what looks like a great plan. And then, as several of you who've spoken tonight have said, you know, learn from your sister cities. Ms. Frazier, I agree. If we stumble on something and we're ready to go, yeah, we go. But I think we can learn from each other's discoveries from our sister cities and be able to play that up in order to move the ball further down the road. I have no doubt that we'll be able to pull this off with fidelity and be very proud of this. We will be able to coast over the presidential election and be wham-bam-ready in '25 again. So I have no, no concerns with this, and I will absolutely be motioning to move this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Hills. Appreciate your leadership on this issue. Councilmember Morthlin, you were mentioned that you had some follow-up comments.
So, thank you, Councilmember Hills. The, the story that she was sharing is about the Fulton County Poll Worker Recruitment Fair that we had here at City Hall way, way before the elections. I was here that day doing other things, and I decided to pop in. And when I went into the room, I was, I was very impressed with the number of volunteers. They were here to learn, they were here to understand the process, but they were also here to be part of the process, and that was, that was very encouraging. Did not know we would be here tonight discussing this. That was just something that I had shared with, with many of us up here. And the reason that was important was because I was speaking with the, the individual that was doing the training that day, and I introduced myself as I was walking out, and she kind of pulled me to the side, and she says, "You know, this has been the best fair, this has been the best recruitment fair out of all of Fulton County. You can just see a, a genuine desire for people that want to volunteer and, and want to be part of a, a good voting process. It was, it was, it was a great day." And she said she really looked forward to coming back and doing another one. That's good feedback. That's, that's a good, positive approach, and, and it starts there. So look forward to, to bringing this forward, you know, and just for the sake of time, all we're doing is talking about putting a resolution tonight. So look forward to bringing that forward. And my, my very favorite comment tonight was talking about how to count the paper ballot, that one ballot. So that's, that was, that was nice.
Thank you, Will. Sarah, Christine, any additional thoughts or comments? Yes, ma'am. Christine.
Okay. I can't be the lone person that doesn't comment on this. No, I definitely will support Councilmember Hills' motion to bring this forward. It's something that we've been looking at really for a long time, and under the prior mayor's leadership has also been investigated. So this is not something that is new, that has just cropped up. It's just something that is being executed at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, pro tem, Christine Hall. Sarah, yes, ma'am. Councilmember Beeson.
I will preface this by saying that I am not opposed to bringing elections in-house to the city of Roswell. I think the demand is there. I think the ability to correctly manage the elections, there's potential for that to be there, and I especially, to Mr. Long's point, believe that we could capitalize on the economies of scale by partnering with our sister cities. In response to a couple of the statements tonight, for the point of clarity, I did want to mention, so while Milton did do an exploratory committee in order to determine to move forward with administering their own elections, that exploratory committee didn't start at the same time as us. That happened for 18 months prior and just now resolved. So that's 18 months of work that Milton, which is a municipality roughly a third of our size, has determined that they're going to be moving forward. Again, that doesn't mean that I'm wanting to say no because of any reason. I just want to be mindful, or at least realistic, of that timeline and how much work they put in for their city, and things that might not necessarily be apples to apples. It was also mentioned that the last time that Fulton County administered our elections, it was roughly $3 a voter, and that is true. The actual cost per voter, though, was $9 a voter, and Fulton County offset the cost by 2/3. So we covered $3 as a municipality, along with the other Fulton County cities. I'm not sure why that is. I've been trying to do some deep diving on my own. If I were to take a wild guess, I would assume it was because T-SLOSS was on the 2021 ballot, which is a Fulton County initiative, and that perhaps would be them trying to cover their portion of the cost. I'm not sure why. So the last time we were given a dollar amount, it was roughly $9 per voter. In total, we only covered a third of that cost. Pre-2021, to the point of, I think several people had mentioned... Pre-2021, to the point of, I think several people had mentioned, walking into voting precincts and seeing too many voting machines for municipal election, it was the same amount that they had seen during presidential years. That's because it was actually Georgia law prior to 2021, and the initiation of SB 202, that you had to have, it's one device per 250 active voters. However, post SB 202, that state legislation put that in the hands of either the municipality or the county that's administering that election, to determine, based off previous municipal years administered under 202, if they thought that that was a fair amount, it was too much, it was too little. So there is a little bit of leeway with that. I don't know that we have seen that leeway be executed in Fulton County yet, and who knows if we even would see it executed. To several people's points, it could just be them copying and pasting. I'm very curious as to why we originally were, I don't know that we were shown, we saw, it was leaked, $11 per voter, for the Fulton County discussion, before we were given the lower cost of $9, which is still, I agree, quite high. I think that we can make it less cost prohibitive here in Roswell. My goal, though, is to make sure that our elections are safe, secure, and affordable, because I believe that that is everyone up here's job, on behalf of the voters. My concern moving forward is the timeline, and I realize that there are, many folks are more confident than myself that we can do this in nine months well. However, I will move forward with tonight's agenda item, which is to initiate the resolution to determine if we are doing kind of an exploratory committee of our own, a little bit more expedited than Milton's, of whether we can or cannot do this, either this year, or at least in 2025. I will mention, though, if we were to move forward with 2025, there's potential, which is not currently on the table, of including Sandy Springs, which would include a much higher economies of scale, because they have more voters, well, a lot more voters, than most of the municipalities that are currently in discussion. So with that, I will go ahead and move it forward, so we can get some more dollars and cents.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks. All right. Any other thoughts, comments, or questions from council? With that, Councilmember Hills, do you have a motion?
Mayor Wilson, I do. I motion to take necessary actions to conduct municipal elections with, within the city of Roswell.
Thank you, Councilmember Hills. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hall. Would you read that, the, the motion on the table, please, again, Councilmember Hills?
Yes. Motion to take necessary actions to conduct municipal elections within the city of Roswell.
It has been first and seconded. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That concludes this evening's business. Do I have a motion to adjourn to specially called election, specially called session?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned by Councilmember Hills. Do I have a sec? Yes. Yeah, yeah. No, thanks. Is there a second to adjourn? Seconded by Councilmember Hall. All in favor of adjourned this special-called city council meeting on elections this evening, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. This city council, special-called city council meeting is adjourned, and we will open up the next session in five minutes. I got to give Nancy a minute, just to get reset. So thank you very much, everybody who came and participated. We appreciate you. Awesome.
You lock the doors, keep them in, they gotta stay for public count.
Where are you going, John's Creek?
All right, thank you and welcome to the Mayor and Council Open Forum of January 30th, 2023. This is the fifth Monday, which means it is open mic night. Obviously, I need to remind everyone, please fill out a comment card, and there's a five-minute time limit, as you've probably noticed and have learned, or at least I've had to learn, when it goes red, I have to say, "Thank you very much," and cut you off. So with that being no further ado, I'm gonna open up the floor to this gentleman who's been waiting patiently all the last hour and forty minutes, fifty minutes. Welcome.
My five minutes could be as long as the break was.
You got the five, you get straight up five?
No, that's unfair.
So please tell everybody who you are and where you live. Welcome, Ron.
My name is Ronald Parker. I live at 405 Old Oak Trace, Roswell, Georgia. I would like to first thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to meet and discuss my concerns with him. And I would like to thank the mayor and the council for the great job they're doing for the city. They were elected to do it, and they're doing a fantastic job. Now, I have a concern of taxes on property for seniors. I don't know how you, a lot of seniors I have talked to are living on fixed incomes. So when the taxes go up, hey, that's some money out their pocket. And I was wondering if there's possibly a way that there could be a prorating of the people's income to help lower their taxes a little. Most places have that in their bill, in their systems, the least you make, the less you have to pay. I'm just thinking, maybe the mayor, the mayor and the council could look at this for us concerned citizens. And another thing I had a problem with is, last year, I got my tax form from the city, and I was looking on the website, and it said the taxes did not go up. So with my concern, I looked at the year before taxes. They had went up. Now, if the website tells me that it did not go up, yet you're erasing my taxes, that's a hard thing to take. And there's a reason for the answer, the reason for that and all that. Accordingly, I've never gotten the answer to my question, to why it went up. But that's neither here nor there. Maybe I will one day, okay? Now, I also want to think about the great jobs being done with Oxford. It was far from coming, and you guys have done a fantastic job. I was looking at the drone flying over, you'd see it, you know, it's fantastic. It's still got a little work, but hey, it's a heck of a lot better than it was, you know? And another question I'm asking is, well, we've got potholes in the city, and that's neither here nor there. But with the last government body, I guess you could say, that represented for the new election that got you guys in, the ball was dropped with the Oxford project, and it cost the city of Roswell a lot of money, a lot of money. And my concern is, as many lawyers as we have in Roswell, and speaking to the lawyer here, why can't some of this money be reimbursed, we got back? All you gotta do is follow the money trail, and you'll see where it went. And maybe there could be some kind of action, or push, or whatever you're saying. I'm not a big speaker, so I don't know, I'm just making simple words. Somebody could answer for it. And if it went in their bank account, if the right pressure was applied, to me, I think it could come out of their bank account. And that would help our city also. This is my thoughts. Now, I don't know how to run the city, and I don't know that I really wanna be a politician, because I can't promise anybody something, nor am I not gonna give it to them. Not knocking you guys, that's just a general joke. But I feel like if the city would look to some of these things about the taxes for seniors, we've got a lot of seniors. So maybe, you know, there's enough seniors, if it really got going, hit this way in the election for any one of you. Just saying, I'm not threatening, I'm just saying. You shouldn't listen to us. It says, "Oh, it's an old man there, he don't know, he don't know," you know, he doesn't know anything. But an old man learned a lot during his life. I'm seventy-six years old, and I come from nothing, and now I have, I'm not complaining, but I went to bed at night hungry, none of you have. But so you can see how the money is important to me, because I think we deserve some kind of help from the city. And maybe you guys can play with it and see what you can do, you know? It's either a yes or a no. But if you don't listen, there's a no. But if you listen, eh, there's a maybe. So with that out going, I'm gonna knock it off, because the mayor said I'd only had five minutes, even though the break was, what, fifteen? And he said it was gonna be five. So who can trust the mayor anymore, right? No, he's a great guy. Don't let anybody fool you. He's a great guy. And I will go with Forrest saying, I don't know anything about all that stuff you were talking about, but I would say, yes, do that. Make our city, save money for our city. That's what you're gonna do with the election thing. Do it. Why wouldn't you? That's what you're there for, to take care of our citizens. So with that, I say, God bless the council, the mayor, and God bless Roswell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Appreciate that.
One minute left, one second left.
Yes, sir. Well done. And I will just, we'll follow up. Robin is gone, right, Jamie?
Yeah, I saw Chris there.
Okay, we'll follow up on the one, on the question of your specific taxes going up last year. We'll follow up on that, Jamie. Can we follow up on that? And then, Mr. Luckett, I know we're part of our zero-based budgeting and part of our planning for both FY23 and, believe in, I'm sorry, FY24, and additional years ahead, there are a lot of things in consideration, and taxes, as they relate to seniors. A personal comment, being, I guess now that I'm officially a politician, I get to comment about politicians. And one of the things that I always find, I don't know, a little unsettling, is the gamesmanship that's played with homestead exemptions. It's very politically cool to say, hey, we're gonna give you a homestead exemption, and you count the dollars, and what the relative value is, and it's usually political gamesmanship. That's been my experience, and I've always been kinda disappointed in to say, hey, we're gonna get you a tax, tax relief, tax relief, tax relief. You're gonna get you a $20,000 homestead exemption, and you go back and you actually count, see what that's worth to you on your individual property taxes. Sounds good, but then in terms of you actually count the dollars, I'm always kinda think it's more politics than actually real value. And yet, people say, hey, look at the tax, 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 the tax cut we're giving you. So I just ask me personally. But to answer your question, Ron, it is part of one of the many, many things that was in consideration. I will tell you, there's not an immediate answer on that, because it's part of zero-based budgeting, but it is in consideration. And Jamie, will you make sure we follow up on Mr. Parker's question about his taxes being increased last year?
Well, I'm not gonna be on the line.
No, I'm with you, but we're gonna answer your specific question. I think it's fair, to your point. All right, thank you, Mr. Parker. Yes, sir, welcome. Yes, sir, with the, the good-looking man in the black shirt, the silver hair. That's right. Before you start, Councilmember Hills would like to say something.
Mr. Parker, I don't know if you have one of these fancy phones that I cuss all the time?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's an app. It's the city of Roswell with the water wheel, I think logo's up there. It says, "City of Roswell." It has got the most fantastic button on their report and issue. It's the top-left button. It's free to get it. I've already reported three potholes, and they were fixed within the week. Reported a couple of other code violations, like extra signs that are not supposed to be out, waving and junking up the city. But I highly recommend getting, I don't know if it's on the website, but get that. I'm using it. They don't do this because I'm a council member. They just take the report and do it. Yes.
No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Lee. And welcome, sir, and share with us your name and where you live. We're glad you're here.
Mayor, council members, my name is Fred Burmer. I live at 1385 Cashiers Way in Litchfield 100th Development. One thing I would like to say is, although this is the first time I've attended one of these meetings, I have been watching on the YouTube. So if you've ever wondered who that person is that's watching the YouTube videos, that would be me. So I feel like, I feel like I'm pretty comfortable here, and I've seen some of the characters that, they're regulars, you know, on the, on the dais here. But the reason that I'm here, and I need, I just need some help and some direction here, you know, I've been asked by our homeowners association, which we have 300 homes in Litchfield, and they've asked me to represent them and bring an issue up to the, to the council, and see what we need to do to get some help with it. About two years ago, what was a dead end in our neighborhood was extended to run out onto Arnold, Arnold Mill Road, just about a mile and a half north of where Cox meets Arnold Mill. And it didn't take long before it became a very popular shortcut for people to avoid that intersection at Arnold Mill and Cox Road that backs up during both the morning and the afternoon rush hours. That's not the problem, although we would rather not have all that traffic, but that's, that's progress. The problem is, is the excessive speeds that we're seeing in the neighborhood. And to date, we haven't really gotten any help with that, and it's getting worse. To give you an example, well, the speed is 25 miles an hour. In October, we actually had a car going so fast down Bucksport, which is, comes off of, off of Cox Road, it rolled. And I don't know how you roll a car at 25 miles an hour. Three weeks ago, we had a car lose control, come up onto the sidewalk, and just obliterate a stone mailbox in the neighborhood, which is still, still laying there. So, you know, we've, we've had, one of our HOA members has talked with a representative at the Roswell Police Department, and we got some vague assurances that, you know, something would happen, and, and nothing has happened, and it's just getting worse. Somebody's gonna get killed. Now, we're not asking, I mean, I realize they have a lot to do, and we're not asking for a task force out there, but what we need is some, some presence to, to really get these, these folks to, to slow down, and, or at least believe that there's gonna be some enforcement going on. We spent about $20,000 a year ago to have six of those, what do you call them, driver feedback signs, you know, with the Doppler radar. And so, you know, and we have a person on the, on our HOA that, that keeps track of all that, and he can provide printouts that show the speeds. We've had speeds almost 90 miles an hour on my street in Cashiers Way. And when we talked with the Roswell Police Department, the comments that we got was, well, you've got some steep grades, the radar doesn't work right, you know, that, that kinda stuff. And, you know, I'm just asking, I guess, the council for, you know, if there's something that you can do to help us, or if there's something we should be doing different, let me know what that is. But, you know, it's not, it's not improving, it's getting worse.
You are, you're talking to a resident here. Well, I can relate. I've had two brick mailboxes taken out, because somebody hit them in excess of 60 miles an hour in a 25-mile zone. I've had a hundred-year-old tree taken out, because someone was going in excess of 70 miles an hour. And I will tell you, year one, which was our last year, speeding was not the first priority. We had 41 initiatives, 38 were executed. We had the 100-day plan, Fred. The reason I'm telling you this is, I can tell you, this morning, we had a meeting with city administrator, city attorney, council liaison, Lee Hills, and the police chief. And shortly, we will, within a very short time period, will come out on what we're gonna do as a city about speeding, because it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable from a quality-of-life perspective. It's not acceptable in terms of how we live with one another. It's not acceptable in terms of people that visit our city or cut through our city. So I hear you loud and clear. I will tell you, there's one practical answer I can give you outside of the enforcement and the speeding issue. And it was, Jeff, I may call you up here, if you, if I could pull you back up in terms, because you gave the committee, you gave, was it the committee last week? So one of the things you're gonna be, you're gonna see coming from us is a host of recommendations, not only for the city to do, but for neighborhoods to be doing, on specific traffic calming measures. For example, the $20,000 that you spent, and I'm not speaking as an authority, I'm speaking as someone who's involved in this. But for example, if, if you had said, hey, Kurt, we're thinking about buying these signs, the radar feedback signs, I would've said, let me ask you a question. Do you slow down when you see one?
Well, I'm very conscious of it, so yes.
And then I would say, and then I would said, watch behavior three weeks, three months, et cetera, as they go on. In other words, they get moved around more from an efficacy perspective, but when they're permanent, see, there's some, there's some legitimate discussion about their efficacy. So last week, Jeff Littlefield, our Director of Transportation, I believe it was last week, Jeff, began, did a, was it committee?
It was that committee, yeah.
It was that committee, did a presentation on a series of things that we're going to explore, which again, these are not, it's not finished, of things that we're gonna say, not only for the city to do, but also for neighborhoods to do, on traffic calming measures, and a series of those. So Jeff, you wanna comment on that a little bit specifically?
Yes, sir. We brought it to the committee, our traffic calming policy. We brought it for guidance and discussion moving forward. It is located on our website. When you pull it up, I think it's roswellgov.com or roswellworks.com. And you can pull it up, and there's two, two separate sections, one's for speeds in excess of five miles an hour, speeds in excess of 10 miles an hour. And we're working through to see, as the mayor said, eliminating speeding in Roswell. And that was part of our zero-based budgeting that came out of the committee, though.
Thank you, Jeff. So just like, this is the Director of Transportation, and one of the things that they've gotta drill down, not just the dollar-wise in the organization, but its policy. And a policy that, I'm telling you, so Fred, you are preaching to the choir, this city is gonna do something about speeding in its city. It's gonna do something about speeding in your neighborhoods.
If I can get your contact information.
Jamie, will you get Fred's contact information as well?
Oh, thanks.
Absolutely. Good. And I'll just end with this. You know, you're right. I think people do slow down, I think, a little bit with those signs, although when we first put them in, it almost became a challenge or a contest to see who could have the highest. So we had to, they had to program the sign, so after 45, it just says, "Too fast," you know, because you didn't want, you know, people wanted to get that. But I can tell you one thing, I for sure slow down when I see a police car. So, you know, it wouldn't hurt, I, I just don't understand why we can't get some presence in the neighborhood occasionally, you know? You know, do your paperwork there or something. But I did, I did make a request today in writing to the Roswell Police Department with three questions, if they can provide it under the, the Information Act. But I asked for, you know, how many, how many citations have they given in the last six months in that neighborhood, three streets in particular, in particular? I asked for if they can provide how much time somebody has spent in the neighborhood policing that. And I also asked how many reported accidents, how many accidents did they respond to, just, just to get some information. I wish I would've thought of that sooner, I could maybe give you that, those statistics too. But I'm pretty sure there's been no speeding tickets issued, you know, in the neighborhood.
Speeding's a quality-of-life issue, particularly when it's in the neighborhoods. And I want to tell you, it is a serious issue that we are going to address in, as an elected body.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for your time. Thanks for coming here, Fred. All right, Jason, I'm gonna, I can't, I can't, I'm gonna give it to you. And now I'll go to this gentleman back there. So you're, Mr. Yow, you're up. Welcome, sir. I'm surprised you're wearing a UGA jacket. I thought you were a fan of Boston College, so I'm surprised to see the UGA jacket. I guess you're monopolizing on the double, two national championships.
Well, one of my boys went to UGA, so.
There you go. All right.
There it is. Now, I, I have a souvenir house as a, to show for it.
Don't start his time. I wanna be fair. So make sure you tell everybody who, who you are and where you live, Jason.
Uh, Jason Yow, 5010 Old Oak Trace.
Welcome.
Roswell, Georgia.
Indeed.
Um, very quickly, I had a very good meeting with a senior GDOT engineer this morning to talk about what we wanna do, and what the limitations are to the things that we would like to do vis-à-vis GDOT. I was really surprised at how receptive he was, how positive the conversation was. After I finished with that meeting, I called Jeff Littlefield. I told him that I had spoken to this fellow, and I wanted to meet with Jeff. Jeff and I are meeting tomorrow for me to debrief him and let him know what, what we had said. It was mainly about the gateway, that was the thrust of, of it. One of the things he was able to confirm for me is that the pedestrian bridge component of the gateway is strictly Roswell-driven. We have the total ability to cancel that if we choose to. GDOT will not step in and go, well, we, we believe in this so much, we're gonna pay for it. That's not gonna happen. Had this, had this bridge been designed to be on the, what I consider the, the correct side of the roadway, it wouldn't be such an issue. But because it was put on the east side, it drove so much of the cost for the gateway. So what I'm asking is for Mayor and Council to move as quickly as you possibly can to cancel the pedestrian bridge, notify GDOT, notify the city of Sandy Springs that this project is dead, off the table, because that will free up the possibility to make serious modifications for the gateway that will shave millions of dollars off of the cost, and probably years off of the construction time, and end up giving us a better project in the end, that's more responsive to the needs of Roswell. So that's, that's my ask here tonight, is, is move on canceling that and, and getting it done, and notifying GDOT and Sandy Springs of the decision, so we can move forward with modifications on the gateway.
Outstanding. You have my word that we will pursue that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Jim Brady, 79 Webb Street. It's about three-minute walk from here. I go right past Mimosa, and a lot of us are concerned about the status of West Alley. Can anybody give us an update on when that, because the last three years, we've been told where they're gonna break ground in January? That was January 19, January 20, January 21. Now it's January 23. So does anybody know what the latest is?
Daryl, do you wanna make any public comment on, what, what, do what, Derry, can you make public comment on it, Daryl? By the way, this is Daryl Conley, our Economic Development Director.
Evening. I was told that, this past week, that they're really looking at an April start date. So they're putting everything in order, so things are, things are looking good, according to the Development Authority.
All right, and let me give you some, lucidate, let me give you some further information that may be of some actual value. So Jason, let me steal you. Mr. Gaines, let me steal you for a second. So let me tell you what I know off the top of my head, and that's why I wanted, Daryl, who's our Economic Development Director, so, who works with the, the authority. So to your point, Jim, we have the same interest you do. When's the darn thing gonna get started?
Yeah.
So we've had conversations with a developer, and meetings with the developer, I think, three or four times formally in the last 12 months. But the reason I asked Mr. Gaines, who's the Community Development Director, up is, the developer submitted a land disturbance, we did the land disturbance permit in November or December, is that correct?
Yeah, it was December. We're talking about West Alley, yeah, it was December.
With December. So we did, we issued a land disturbance, an LDP, for this project in December. And then they, Fulton County issued theirs. When that come back? Do, do we know off the top of our head?
I've not gotten an update on that. The bit, the hangup was Fulton County with the sewer, and the recording of a sewer easement to connect to a line. And I've not gotten an update on that. It's, every time I ask, nobody's heard anything. So we need to follow back up on that. But it's still in process, as far as I know.
So Jim, to your question, I share the same, sometimes frustration, like, when are we gonna actually break ground? Daryl, as the Economic Development Director, is responsible for the chain of command of information and making sure we stay on top of this. So may I ask a favor and just say, can we follow up on the status of the LDP in Fulton County, and make sure that is executed? If it's not executed, what is waiting to be done on that? And I believe, obviously, it's a private developer who's, who's, there's an arrangement with the Downtown Development Authority, which is an instrument in the city. So obviously, my, I don't wanna make assumptions publicly. I have some assumptions of what I think is occurring, probably from a financial perspective, in a good way, like any deal of this transaction. But I don't wanna state publicly what I do not have permission to state, and what I do not know 100%. So, but I do believe that the deal is healthy, let me say that, and moving in a good accord. Obviously, we would like to have, and to the point of your question, we've liked it to probably be under construction, but I do feel confident sitting here that we are moving forward in a confident pace. But we do need to follow up and make sure that things are in accord, because obviously, things do happen. And, and I think your question, Jim, was, you thought this was happening 18 months ago.
Well, I've been going to HBC meetings and DDA meetings over that whole project, probably for the last four years, and we're just, we're all anxious, since they tore down some buildings that were gonna be part of it. Now there's an empty lot that's got some weeds growing in it, and it's kind of an eyesore, and it's been like that for two years.
Let me say this, Jim. I do not believe that the city of Roswell is responsible for any encumbrance upon that project.
I know, it's, we just wanna get an update from the developer. I thought maybe the, the hotel that's going in there would have some kind of leverage about moving things forward, but.
Well, the LDP was probably the last most significant formal process, both with the city and with Fulton County. And so we just need to make, get clarity that Fulton County's issued the LDP.
I'll take it, maybe April-ish.
We'll see if we can't get a more specific answer, and make it, make that public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And while I'm up here, while you guys are talking to all these other cities in North Fulton, I know this issue comes up like every 10 or 12 years, about the County of Milton. And I know there are a lot of roadblocks to having that happen, but while you're all talking, maybe if you start at least discussing the idea of it, it might happen in my lifetime.
So I will tell you, that's simply, it's pure politics and pure numbers. And so eight years ago, in the years ago, in the state legislature, they were about one vote away
Right.
from the possibility of creating what they needed to in the state constitution and having the momentum politically to do that, regardless of what side of the aisle you are, this is a political equation. Those numbers do not, are, from a political perspective, from what I understand, the state legislature are nowhere near that close. And so that the reality of getting a Milton County politically done is up to you, the voters, throughout the state of Georgia, and not just to the North Fulton cities.
So, forget it.
It is a very tall order.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Brady. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Thank you, Mr. Conley. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Janet Russell. I live in Roswell. Have a few comments. First of all, I wanted to echo Mr. Morthlin's comments about the event last night at the City Cultural Arts Center. It was fantastic. It was over the top. Spoken word and music that was unbelievable. And I met lots of visitors there. They came from Conyers, they came from Mableton, they came from downtown Atlanta, they came from everywhere. And they were astonished that Roswell would honor Black history like they did with this fantastic cultural event. So hats off to Corinne Sutherland, who obviously had created a great relationship with the lead poet and the other poets and the musicians. They were fantastic. So while everybody who's at home comfortable is watching, read your roswellroots.com. What is that again, Lee?
Roswellroots.com, Janet.
Yes, roswellroots.com. I've probably given out four dozen of those brochures to every person I meet at the grocery store, a parking lot, and they are thrilled. Some people have said, "I've lived here 10 years. I had no idea." I said, "21 years." They finally raised the bar, and it's fantastic. There are some other interesting things, the Black Opry, but there are lots of author events. I'm a recovering English major, you know. We have one on sports and Black athletes. We have a man that I happen to know, Bertel, a Bertel, who's head of a scholarship committee. I met him probably at the Irish Council Generals a few months ago. He will be speaking. I'm not an ad for this, but we need to let people know we do have an amazing, and as I brag, we have the largest, most comprehensive Black History Celebration in the state. Not bad for a squeaky little white town like Roswell, as the perception is. It's fantastic. So I wanted to say that, heads up. It's really, really good. Secondly, I wanted to say thank you to the people at Public Works, because we had a new house built on my street for the first time in 50 years. And the concrete trucks drove over the curb and broke the drains all the way down, because they didn't care. And the concrete that was pouring the foundations. And broke the curbs, the curbs, the drain, everything. And I called Sharon, and within an hour, those guys were out there assessing the damage. And then last week, one of the guys had to get down into the drain, which is all lined with bricks, and like being in a chimney, and he had to fix the whole bricks. And then they fixed them. And then they fixed the lip over the drain, and then they had to put in a new curb. So it was great, because our little street, we'd get it cleaned like once, once a year. Jason's comment about the bridge is fantastic. We've been telling them for years, it's on the wrong side of the main bridge now. And as you read in the news, the north, and that North Side Shopping Center that's up there just north, south of North River Tavern has sold, and is going to become hundreds of apartments and condos, et cetera. And we don't, I'm sorry, we just don't need to be providing people there an easier access to our parks than I have. I wanted to let you know that we're celebrating the 37th month that Oxbow Road is closed. 37 months. For those of you who see it on a timeline, you go, "Oh, that's a really long time." Yeah, but it's getting better. We lived the dream over where I live, and it's been horrible. Horrible, horrible. Reminder, 60 months it took to build the Golden Gate Bridge. Think about it. So it's getting there, but it's a mess, and it's not pretty, and they're putting in the new traffic light arms. Guess what? We told them 10 years ago, that's all it needed. A couple of things noted. For some reason, on Canton Street, every private parking lot is now run by 12 Oaks Parking. Did they get an exclusive permit to manage and charge at every single parking lot that's not a public street? I don't know. But they're there with the little guys in the golf carts, charging money. And I get complaints from people going, "What the hell is this?" Now, I don't mind parking, people that pay to park, but how did they get the exclusive contract? I don't know. I'm dumb. Finally, my wish for the new year is, I would like to see the city take some effort to solarize every publicly-owned building in this city. Every one. It used to be that solarization was awful and expensive and big. Well, now it's the size of a credit card in a window. Think about how many buildings we own, from park pavilions to gymnasiums to jails, to this, to that. We could then sell, we'd buy our own electricity. It'd be free. And with the Build Back America Act, or whatever it's called this year, there's billions of dollars out there for us to get to become a sustainable community. And I would like us to become more sustainable. I'd also like to see us recycling all the glass and metal from the 245 people, companies that own liquor licenses in this town, because we don't recycle any of their glass.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. You've been very patient. Welcome.
Thank you for staying up for me. My name is Eliana Perez. I live at 580 Broughton Street, which is right off of Woodstock Road. I'm a neighbor to Fellowship Christian School. I have lived in Roswell for 20 years now. As all of you are aware, Fellowship has submitted once again a request for the longstanding conditions that protect the surrounding neighborhoods and the residential homes and the quality of life of all of us. They've asked for some conditions to be lifted. The meeting was scheduled for January 10, and now changed to March 13. In case I cannot attend that meeting, I wanted to ensure my voice is heard and my comments placed on record. The school is asking for a marching band and visiting school bands to come to games. They're asking for live music anywhere on the property, lights on baseball fields and tennis courts, and a public announcement system on those baseball and tennis courts. Very few homes received the postcard for the January 10 meeting. For example, I live on a cul-de-sac, and only I received it. The two immediate homes to my right and left did not receive it. I live in a neighborhood of 24 homes, and we don't have any Fellowship students. And the people I've spoken to did not receive the postcard. And I think it's important that all homes affected in these surrounding neighborhoods be informed of what the school is asking for and the additional noise there will be if these requests are approved. I came here last month for another of your meetings, and I left feeling really good, because in all of your discussions, and even tonight, you repeatedly say, "Quality of life here in Roswell." Anyway, I left feeling really good, because in your discussions, you all kept referring to equality of life and questioning whether neighbors had been informed of issues, and you were worried about setting precedence in the decisions that, that you make. And I beg you to do the same when considering Fellowship's requests come the month of March. Years ago, when the stadium lights and sound system was approved for the stadium, the neighbors were told to not worry that it would only be used for varsity games, maybe eight games a season. Well, the school has grown quite a bit since then. The school has over 30 outdoor sports teams, and they're listed on their website. And frankly, they abuse that PA sound system in all of the games by playing all genres of music before, during, and after games. Many times, there's doubleheader games, so it can be from 4:00 PM until 9:00, 10:00 PM in the evening. And it's not just Fridays, it's four to five times a week. They sound off sirens and horns that are startling. And we, and we, our neighbors, we call City Hall or Police a few times each season, and I have used the app, Lee, that you mentioned. And I got the fastest response I'd ever received, which was awesome. But anyway, here we are again, you know, coming to the same, what makes it okay now for them to be asking for this? Anyway, back to my note. Spring season is almost worse than fall, since there's more team sports played on the fields. There's boys' and girls' soccer, lacrosse track, there's varsity, there's junior, there's middle school teams. It's, it's a lot of teams playing on those fields. In the summer, the school, the church, they hold a summer camp in the woods behind Broughton Park and Glens of Crab Apple, which is another surrounding neighborhood. And from 9:00 to 3:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, there are six-year-olds kids playing in the woods behind their house, screaming and singing. And I use this as an example, because it's all year-round that we have to deal with this noise. A couple of years ago, they had an Easter sunrise mass at the stadium at 6:00 AM in the morning, and it woke us all up. The school, just because they can't be given a carte blanche to use that, that PA system whenever they want. And then to add to that, a marching band and another PA system on the other side of the school with lights, meaning the other side of the school would also have late evening games and noise and music. Those baseball fields and the tennis courts, if you walk the property, you'll notice that even more on that side. There is homes that are just yards away. I mean, you can see their windows and their rooftops right when you're standing right there. They're going to be dramatically affected with that sound system and those late-night games. I'm a mother of two high school girls here in Roswell, and, believe me, I value after-school activities. I think they're very healthy for our children. And by asking that you don't approve this, the students at Fellowship can still learn to play instruments. They can play in bands and orchestras, just do it inside.
Thank you, Ms. Press. I really appreciate your time, and I hope you come back and see us on March, you said March the?
13.
13. I hope you're back. Thank you for your comments.
Well, if I may, just want to say one thing, if...
No, ma'am, I'm so sorry. I get in trouble every time I've let it, I had to learn the hard way. I'm so sorry. All right. Anybody else? Mr. Long, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Couple of things I hadn't planned on talking about.
Just for the record, say your name, Scott, and where you live.
25 Martin Ridge Road. And Janet told me to talk louder, so I'm going to try.
Okay.
The, just two things that I hadn't planned to talk about, but we were, there was a mention of traffic calming and, on Grimes Ridge Road. And there was an R-TAC meeting about that a couple of weeks ago, and I think there wasn't a lot, wasn't a lot of appetite, I think, to accept the traffic calming. But I did want to, there was a talk about the lights on Vickery Lane and Shadow Brook, where they intersect on, with Grimes Bridge being green all the time, therefore people go full speed. I wanted to just mention or remind everybody that probably 10 or more years ago, both of those lights used to be red all the time. And there was some type of detector that would, you couldn't go through the light full speed, it would, it wouldn't turn green in time. But if you got within about, not to the white line, but maybe 10 or 15 feet from that light, it would turn green every time for you. So you never had to stop and wait a long time at that light, but you always had to, you could never go full speed. You always had to get down to almost, you know, five, four, five miles per hour. As a result, you couldn't speed down Grimes Ridge Road between Dogwin and Oxbow. There was no way to do it, because the lights were always red. But at the same time, it wouldn't block you for a long period of time. You didn't have to sit there, wait for a timer. It would just turn green when, when you were there, it saw you. So that's one opportunity that was, I don't know why we took it away, but it seems pretty inexpensive to turn it back on if we want to slow that road down a little bit.
Thanks, actually, Scott, I'll interrupt you. That you, you've actually shared with something, something with me I've not heard before. So thank you. That's, that's something I actually haven't heard before. So that's an easy one to follow up on.
It worked great. It worked great. Maybe we could do it somewhere else, too. The other one is just on the, on the, on the pedestrian bridge. I'm actually a big fan of the pedestrian bridge across the Chattahoochee, next to, adjacent to Highway 9. And I actually think the side that it's proposed on is the right side. But in any case, I hope we have a bridge and we don't lose that bridge. I think there's a lot of funding for it that we're not having to pay for. Maybe we're contributing, but I think the majority is somebody else, federal money helping us out with that. The reason is, because I spend a lot of time running and biking and walking on our river trail system, which is awesome. But in many ways, it's a trail to nowhere. There's, there's nowhere to spend money. There's no restaurants. There's no food and beverage. I know our favorite complicated warrior tells me that I should pack a picnic if I want to have a meal on the, by the river. But I don't plan that far ahead. We're just, we're not that way. So we have, on occasion, gone across the street to North River Tavern, which is a very, very short walk from Riverside Park. It's the dangerous walk, but it's a very short walk, and it's on the Riverside Park side, across the street from North Side Tavern and that big mall where Samad Grill is, and where the new development may be. Across the street from that, there's nothing. There's a big office building, it's a bunch of houses. There's no reason, it wouldn't help a Roswell resident to use the bridge to get to an office building, but it would help us to get to where all the restaurants are. I went to the meeting, Sandy Springs describing that project that they're building, and there is housing, but they're also talking about a nine-foot sidewalk that runs the whole length of Roswell Road on their side, I mean, on the east side of Highway 9, the Riverside Park side. Almost, I mean, I don't want to compare it to the Belt Line, but it's, maybe it's the closest to a first step to the Belt Line that we're going to have, because along that nine-foot sidewalk is going to be a first-floor restaurants along the full length of the, of the residential building. So they're going to create a situation where if you're on, on the River Park system, and you want to have a meal, you cross the bridge on our new, on the new pedestrian bridge safely. You take a nine-foot sidewalk to a strip of restaurants that has outdoor seating overlooking that, overlooking that, that nine-foot sidewalk. So I definitely would love a safer way to get across. I think a pedestrian bridge on either side helps. I think on the side where there's, you know, amenities that are, that Roswell residents may want to use is the better side for it. And, yes, I mean, I would encourage any of y'all to park at Riverside Park and go to North River Tavern for some wings, or Samad Grill for, you know, for, for a wrap. And, and just kind of think through the experience. And also maybe consider finding a way to get some, some restaurants over on the Roswell side, maybe the Yellow House. Thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. And as I've mentioned to Mr. Yao, I promise you, you have my word, I will follow up on the details of the pedestrian bridge in the Gateway Project. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from Roswell residents? Being that there are no further comments, I bring it back to the council for, actually, let me find my little notes here. Make sure, where's my little, thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you for being here. Consider there are no further comments. The open forum of January 30 is adjourned, and council, we're now adjourned. Thanks so much.
Meeting's adjourned.